Yeah, the town council of Washington. We've got a few folks, we've got Nancy joining us online and uh, Jonathan joining us on online via Zoom. Hey Nancy. Can you, can you guys hear us all? You're both muted, but I, I saw your votes on the. I'm not hearing any uh. Hold on, Texas here.
Can you hear us, Martin?
Yes, I can hear you both.
Alright, thanks, I'm sorry about that.
Good.
Yeah, we can hear you both. Alright, uh, let's see. Any uh, any questions to be uh, gathered up? I would like to just add one thing on the new business, and that is to, at our next meeting, uh, discuss the speed limit on Main Street. As I mentioned before we broke for the summer, the Commonwealth's given us new authorities to regulate speed within the towns, if you want to within the towns. Just to, so we've got that all. And otherwise, I would uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye. Minutes, we've got the July eighth and twenty ninth meeting minutes, uh, the special meeting on the twenty ninth was to deal with the uh, the ordinance change. Any, any questions about the minutes? And can, you guys hear me all right out there, I'm sorry? Got a screen in front of me, no. Have a second? All in favor? Aye. Alright, well, I will uh, I will apologize in advance for a slightly longer than usual mayor's report, uh, only because it was a long summer where most of us gone to win, uh, and uh, One thing I did want to uh, just really turn back the clock to the beginning of July, uh, you know, the town again supported the uh, the concert at Avon Hall. Uh, we received a very nice note from John Bujwa following the concert, and I just wanted to read that to the record. It quotes at the beginning, "If music be the food of love, play on." And we did, with the help of a very special choir of angels, saying, "Thank you to your support and donation doesn't capture the very real difference you made in what has become an annual musical celebration of our independence, the Rappahannock Way, with neighbors, friends, and family gathered together. And once again, we are able to hear the wonderful Lorraine Tetchens and Sarah Sheffield and the musicians of the Bujwa Band. It is our hope going forward, we can embed this in the county calendar, and with your support, I believe we can. In the meantime, I wanted to share a recording, there's a link here which we can post, that was done by Paul Reiser. Uh, we hope it brings back wonderful memories and services, a reminder that it's our choir of angels who make this possible, oh, make this possible. All the best, John Bujwa." And I would also take this opportunity to congratulate John on his ninetieth birthday last week. I know some of you were, were around to celebrate this. Wonderful member of our community and a wonderful way for us to celebrate the fourth every year, so. Here's, here's hoping for many more years of John, John conducting the concert at Avon Hall. Moving to the, the slightly more mundane, of course, we had our, our summer of maintenance of water and sewers, becoming somewhat the tradition, uh, for better or worse. We can report that now forty-three percent of the valves in town have been tested, we've got ten that need additional maintenance. But the good news is, after the replacement of valve on Main Street this summer, we can now begin to isolate parts of town when you have a walk-in. So, we can now isolate P Mile, I don't know, the west end of Main Street, and also Paris Hollow, so we do have a way to sort of minimize the impact on the entire town by isolating. We put in two, two new water caps at Rush River, preparation was going down there. As, as with every summer, we've learned some lessons about maintenance, and some work that we're having down at the Bell House, um, the filter system down there was finally nearing coming back online. And then, as we get into the fall, I think Brad, uh, what's the, I think you've been managing the project on the generator, what's the, you think we'll get that in this fall, or?
Something to deliver or something.
Yeah, between twelve, I, I have called up with them today and see.
Well, hopefully that will, that will come together, I know Brad's worked hard to make sure we got a backup power supply now.
Yeah, and we're gonna make another little change, I don't know if you know or not, um, in terms of how the pump gets started and operates, so we'll put the woods head to the back. Hopefully it lasts longer and it's less stress and rust in the system, so, it's better to equip for that box. And then, we need a pressure transmitter, and a few more dollars, in doing so, we can set the pump up and ready to shoot.
And we're also gonna look at instrumenting the wells, so we can see the well levels, so if we head into drought, we'll have a sense of how, you know, a real sense of how, when the water comes. And I also do want to generally comment, you know, it's been almost five years ago, between Brad and Barbara, you know, really concentrating on working on the water and sewer system. Well, we still have a long way to go to finish recapalizing the system, it's a serious progress, so. And we're in good shape ahead of the, the better, so thank you both. Well, we're, we're heading the curve, but if they ask, we're keeping it there, just, just. Speaking of Rush River, uh, of course, we'll be talking about, about the adjustment, but um, I spoke to representatives in Rush River a couple of weeks ago, and I think uh, they're looking toward opening the office building down there in November, and then the residences in sometime in March of next year, so. Steady progress toward getting that whole complex up and going. At the end of July, for those who weren't around, uh, we did meet and completed the process for the modification of the ordinance on the bed breakfast, which sort of brought us in line with the Commonwealth standard for those, as we've been discussing all through the last few months. Town Hall got a fresh coat of paint this summer. We also got a new HVAC system this summer, uh, that was unplanned, but uh, it's been great, uh, as part of the work, we were able also to take out all the old AEC four feeters that were in there, it was a great change and helped with our energy efficiency. I want to thank, uh, you know, the folks who donated so far to the renovation, George, George Eaton, Drew Mitchell, Drew Adet, Long Years, Chip and John, Louise and Kirsten, and uh, and Patrick, and the team at the end who actually donated all the paints. We paid for the painting, but they donated all the paint these years. I'd also have to uh, thank my other half-fan for helping me put the place back together after they finished painting, um, and uh, and also thank them for not asking me how much money I spent on Town Hall. Let's see. And then we've got, got some more work going to try to get done before Christmas, but I'm sure they have the place all, all shined up and ready for the holiday season. Then this, this summer, we hosted the, the Commission on Local Government, of course, that's the issue that we'll deal with tonight, hopefully very briefly, to finally begin, finalize in the process for the boundary line adjustment. And one last thing, I think our friends in the press would probably excuse me very early, but um, I think, I think all of you know at this point, I spent a lot, a lot of time away this spring to deal with health issues. I am very happy to report tonight that I had a series of tests the last couple of weeks, and met with my GI doctor this morning, and I am cancer-free. Been an interesting time, and I don't know what else to say. Been a hell of a year so far. And I think that is more than enough for the mayor's report, and we can move on with the business enough. Madam Treasurer, things look good?
Things are looking good, though I'm not really agreed to use the entire manual recap, uh, but I would like to point out that we, as you know, we put the, all of the Rush River cap fees in sewer fees up into the LGRP, where we have the general fund, where we can start from some good interest. It's easy to pull it down, all I have to do is make a phone call, uh, we can get it down whenever we need, but uh, I think we're, we're doing.
And those, those, those funds are funding our capital recapacitization process, so.
Yes, yes, so those are stat, for, they're for specific reasons. We have the uh, we're, we are up to three months of operating expenses. The goal of course is to get us up as the state guidelines are to, yeah, six months minimum. My dream of course would be a year, but I have a lot of room to make donations to the town. So I think everything is looking good. Do you have any questions? There's uh, pretty much all that's been here.
I think we're running roughly in line with our projections when we did the budget.
Yeah, and we, we really are, where, where you see where uh, income is a little higher, that just because of Rush River. It's, it's, it's a one-time, so we are definitely in line. When we were doing the budget, we of course didn't know what was going to come along, when and how the money was going to funnel in, so we decided to be conservative as opposed to being up in the, in the world. Any questions or anything?
Do you have questions?
Those are mine, and.
Not a problem. And if you're interested, if we go up ten percent.
Anyway.
I'm sure you know, last year, I was scared of the curve.
Maybe, it wasn't, it was, we did it very moderate.
Yeah, we did it there this year, yeah.
It's getting a commission tomorrow.
Better than that, I'm sure.
Yeah, but six, because six can change a lot.
Yeah, it's a big change.
Okay.
I want to say six twenty-five.
Yeah, I think we adjusted one, ten thousand. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. President?
Newfelden, Ericson, Newfelden, thank you Mayor, uh, Chris Wall. Quick thing to report on you, I had the boundary line adjustment on your agenda later, but I wanted to let you know that um, I did attend a community, Commission on Local Government, uh, meeting back in July, July third, and they, they only wanted to make minor edits to staff's draft of the report. So, what, they only produced what basically is a staff report, so that's, that's a good sign, we didn't see any concern about the elements of that boundary line adjustment. Stand ready, Nancy first.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garrison's out tonight, I believe, so uh, I'm looking to have this reported in front of you, like your package, uh, you received on Friday. Madam Chairwoman, would you like to, your report?
I have no report, because we haven't met in August since our meeting in July.
Thank you. And the ARB likewise, so you have a report for, they, we know that they took action, and I guess this is part of our agenda for the rest of the fall. They took action on the barn, that was requested, the demolish, demolition request from the end of the barn. And uh, they decided in favor of, of that, that request, however, that, that decision has since been appealed, so the council will have to consider that appeal at our October meeting. It's the first time, in my knowledge, the first time they've had that appeal, so it'll be a learning experience. And I think that's, I think that's it for reports, so we're ready to turn to the boundary line adjustment. Uh, Mr. President, you want to just make some leadoff comments on the matter?
Sorry, I can make some brief comments about that, uh, the, uh, we are now at the very latest stages of this process, we have the report from the Commission on Local Government, which is favorable to the, uh, the request for the boundary line adjustment. This is a reminder, the reason why government is that this does provide for a long-term land use restrictions on land that is to be annexed to the town, specifically not allowing for eventual development in, uh, based to a ruptured common. So, um, at this point, you know, your next step, if you are, you know, you are so inclined, is to vote to approve the boundary line adjustment, and direct staff and the mayor to proceed with the necessary steps involving the circuit court.
Alright, thank you, sir. And the verdicts that we had before us is a standard verdict that was come up with by our council, county council, and the, and the, and the same, in line with what the commission expects to see from us, based on their report. That would go to the circuit court for final approvals. Once, once the, and the county acted last week to approve it, as, as we're, assuming we move tonight to do the same, and uh, we'll move on to the next step. I think at this point, I need, I will open it for any public comments we had before we, we vote on it, so.
Joe, you'll open the public hearing?
Your public hearing, I'm sorry. So, uh, that would open, open the public hearing, any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Carolyn and Steve, Chair of the. So first of all, I wanted to just say thank you, and I know the hard work that's been through this, so thank you to everybody who's been involved in a long, long process. Two things about I wanted to say, um, when we did Rush River one, we were really responding in some ways to the comprehensive plan of both, our own comprehensive plan of the town of Washington, and the comp plan of the county, both of which said we needed to boost the population, and a key part of Rush River one was the housing. Uh, now we come to Rush River two, and two things to note, one, I noticed in the recording of the supervisors leading, there's still see, uh, on the boundary line adjustment, there still seems to be confusion. People are still welcoming the housing that will go into Rush River two, and we know there will be no housing. I think my, my request, general request, is that as soon as possible, we begin to discuss what will be in Rush River two. Because without that housing, it's harder to see how it aligns with the comp plan. And the town has skinned the game in that we gave up our right to have a, a boundary line adjustment somewhere else for the next five years and some other things. And I find myself personally unsure of what the plans are for Rush River two. So I think to, to involve the town and other interested parties as quickly as possible, so that we come up with something that's participatory, and that people feel is in line with our original objectives, isn't just kind of, well, we've got the space now, uh, let's put something on it. And, and also is in, in line with what we know others are doing. For example, I hear the libraries, you know, have a big fundraiser because they want to create a community center at the library extension. We're talking about possibly having a community center here. It's very important that we look at this, obviously, with black capital, and in a very participatory spirit partnership, but we look at it in a way that takes account of other things that are going on. Thank you for my point. Thank you.
Nancy, did you have any comments? Give me a minute, Nancy. Nancy, can you hear me?
I can.
There you go. Did you have any, any comments?
This process has gone on so long, I, I think it just needs to proceed, I think we need to pass this and go on to the next step, so as Carolyn says, we can begin discussing what's going to go on that property. I would like to see more housing, but they need to have that, so we, we do need to, to know what, what their plans are for it.
Yes, ma'am, couldn't agree more, thank you. Steve, do you, oh, I'm sorry, John, go ahead. Again, raise his hand up.
Uh, John Sullivan, uh, one, because I like history, you've been around for a while, and kind of helped to point out that Mayor Gene Weyer, not many of us fully remember, back in two thousand and ten, Gene dreamed of bringing this piece of property to town, but I thought that would be an excellent idea, this was a natural progression throughout the two eleven. God love Gene, you think it took long? I decided to acknowledge that. I'd like to sort of add on to what, what several people said. First of all, I am, it's great that it happened, thanks to everybody, I think it was a natural evolution for this to be part of the, the town, the property. And I look forward to, to hearing with more specificity, I've heard a lot, of what the owners might want to do with the property. So on the one hand, I'd like to hear more. On the other hand, without knowing what people want to do, I personally am kind of of a movement of Rush River one is in place. The building's not as occupied, the apartments are not really functioning, we don't have the eighteen year rent number of people living there. And that's a significant amount of change for the town, uh, both in terms of building structures and parking and such, and there's a lot of volume and stuff, which is good looking at us there. And I hope we just are very careful looking, I know we will be very careful, I'm sure. Going forward is that what, if anything, is an excellent, uh, because the more that's done, uh, I fear, not going to be supportive of, I can be supportive of any given specific idea, when I know that they don't want to target. But I do fear that all of a sudden, the, well, it's not that the center of town would be down there, but such a large proportion of what, what might consider to be the town of Washington is there, and not just Franklin and Stevens. And uh, so that will be. And I say it's recognizing its own commercial, so they're actually in position to do all of the things that the town may not, has to sort of actually under control. But I guess one last phrase, at least from my standpoint, a hearty endorsement of the boundary adjustment, at least from my side, doesn't translate immediately into therefore endorsement of a bunch of stuff that I've already heard.
Thank you, John. I know that there will be many, many hours, I'll just put that, a conversation. I will say months, but there will be many hours of conversation ahead of us before any, uh, so much as a shovel hole that shifts over there, so, but uh, but I think, as everybody said, it's, it's important advancement for the town in general. Steve, did you, you guys have any comments, or you? I'm not, put me on the spot, I'm just asking.
I can wait till public forum.
What's that?
I can wait till a public forum, if that's appropriate.
Okay, there are no, no other comments from the public, I will, I will close the public hearing, and then I will shift it to the council for any comments and questions. Right?
When we first started on this, there was a lot of hesitation, because we didn't know what we're getting into. We had some drawings, and it's very, very difficult to go from a drawing to think and visualize three D, what we're gonna have. To the accolades of Rush River, I think they've done a marvelous job. The quality of construction is excellent, you know, adding the housing units. I'm disappointed that in getting the BLA approved, that the county said no residential development, because, you know, I strangled my head many times about this, you know, and we talked about it. We have a comprehensive plan that says more people, the county has a comprehensive plan, and we hear endless.
Says more people in the villages and towns.
In the villages and towns, yes. And we hear, you know, endless discussion of where do our teachers live, where do our sheriff's deputies live, things like this. And to then turn around and say, nope, you don't want this housing, okay, you're kind of looking into the unknown, so the idea of, gee, are they gonna put several big apartment buildings, and would it be ugly? You know, we now know that, no, it wouldn't. It would be very thoughtfully designed, uh, when you look at the actual structures, I, that, there's some, I don't know, how many, how many wells did you put underneath the housing units for the heat pumps? In order to be, in order to be energy conservative, conservation, and energy efficient, um, you know, so we, we have to develop earth that was very changing, and we do an outstanding job adding this kind of housing to that parcel. So it's, it's hard to disappoint with the county, uh, push on us and say, no, the residential development, because, again, depending on what goes in there, be it commercial, be it publicly accessed space, as a, uh, meeting center, whatever, um, as John said, could technically pull from the downtown area, even though we don't have a meeting facility in downtown, other than Crystal, essentially. So, it, it's sort of, you know, the, the teacher taught her, depending on what you're talking about, was one way, and then goes the other way. So, I, I think the county, and, and with all respect to the members of the board of supervisors, and the county administrator, and everything, um, I, I think they made an error in judgment in insisting that there be no economic, or no residential development. Because again, I think it would help the county tremendously, uh, for the people who would actually reside there. Because I'm sure that we have some, say elderly people who are struggling with property they own in the county to keep it and to maintain it and to pay the taxes, but you have to be able to move into a lower income. How else would it be easy to maintain, no cost to, to live in?
And make way for younger people to take over this more.
Exactly, that's, that's a real good analogy, is that, you know, they may sell their property to someone who's coming in and wants to, to do more with it. Hopefully it will be just weekenders that don't go, but, you know, but the properties could that take on another life. You've sort of boxed ourselves in. I don't know whether, you know, a year from now or so, the supervisors might want to rethink that. There might be enough public discussion to say, really, we need to think this through again. You know, the town is here, it has the, the infrastructure services that would be needed. This would be a wise decision for us as a county and a town, to support that kind of redevelopment or reuse of that, what is now just a bare piece of planning, and not end up with conflicting or competitive facilities, because that doesn't benefit anybody. So I think, again, I, I'm totally supportive of, of the boundary line adjustment, I mean, I looked at it from infrastructure direction, thinking about what it's gonna do, can we support it? Do we have the resources, depending on what was gonna go in there, even if it was gonna be housing, we have the ability to support that. So, yeah, I'm hoping that now that we've seen what Chuck Anthony and his vision, and his resources, and all his people, uh, have done thus far, the people will rethink and go, this is actually a very good thing, you know, we're not ending up with something just slapped up like you see in Marshall or any other town around, where, you know, when the wind blows, you can feel it, and here, the building sways and everything else, because the construction's so cheap. You know, I, I think, yeah, we, we want to keep things that are high quality, that add to the town of Washington, um, both in structure and in community, in the residents that come. So, you know, that's, that's my two cents, and again, I hope that maybe there is the possibility through whatever channels necessary to revisit the residential development restrictions that are currently on the property. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. I wouldn't say it was, you know, the point that I think was raised in the public comment, it was, it was interesting to listen to the debate that the board of supervisors were presenting. It was interesting to listen to the debate that the board supervisors were presenting. So, you know, a good number of their constituents expected a different outcome.
And I guess I would just like to repeat the thanks to the members of the town who worked so hard, the members of the county, and the members of Rush River Commons. And this was a long, difficult process and took a lot of time and energy. We really do appreciate it.
Yeah. Quite a journey for all of us.
Well, the town has never adjusted its boundary since.
Since, no, in the nineties, we did some small adjustments for privately held courses.
Okay.
It was like, never, never more than a year, I don't think. It was the one time I did it.
So a significant adjustment to the original boundary of the town. So since 1796.
George would write your question.
He would. He laid it out.
What's that?
He laid it out.
Yeah. So same. In the middle of the month. Well, with that, I think I would entertain a motion to approve the document we had before, before us and to do any other necessary paperwork required by the attorney myself to forward this to the court.
I shall.
So is the name there?
Yes.
Full say? Will be a roll call vote? Pete?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. That would land, uh, it was adopted. So, with that, I will open it to, actually, on the new business front, I was just in, so the next meeting that came out, so I would like us to consider setting a speed limit and current speed limits in town, but I would want to address them up and down. So we'll get everybody to think about that in the interim. Think of that, what those options might be. We can't take it lower than fifteen miles an hour, so. All right, so positive that from the business. At that point, I would, I would open for the public forum. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I have a question somewhat related to the passage of the boundary line, but also the handling. And it's about the water usage, and maybe for Brad. We've got Rush River coming in, one, and now two. That was accounted for under San Patrick's. Ten new rooms will be going ahead. Jim Agdo is talking about more rooms to attach to the moof. Do we have a, are we able to have a good sense of the usage now on our system as these new users come to the fore?
Yeah, we have a pretty good idea of what the daily flows are. So we know what the capacity going through the plant is. We know what the design capacity is. Steve Guyerson and I had a discussion with the county. And what we are thinking to propose is that for anyone who's asking for development, that part of their submission will be a projection of water and sewer usage. So that we can start to keep a tally of that. Because we may say, without specific numbers, we could take on ten more residents without a problem and three businesses. But maybe one or two of those businesses is significantly larger. So now we have fewer residential groups that we can support. So it becomes a balance. And that, and the only way to do that is to, again, for, you know, Jim Agdo's expansion. You know, there are tables, there are references they can go to. Steve's on the whole end of those words.
My real concern is, and it sounds like you're a concept. I understand when we get up to about eighty percent of capacity use, the state can say, what are your plans for now expanding capacity? I just, as a town, we don't want to fight ourselves suddenly forced into an expansion because we haven't done the math.
Exactly, and I'm glad we got up to eighty percent. Because again, this is what Steve and I sat down with, would be to look at the capacity of the plant. And if we put eighty percent as our cap, so we can't go beyond that. And that way, anyone who comes in and wants to add in, we can take a look and say, okay, we still have, have reached that point. But once we do, the town could say, no, we cannot provide you with sewer water service. We can deny you, which we can stand on. And how we might also caveat that is that we won't support any development above eighty percent until such time as all the outstanding debt on the wastewater treatment plant is retired. So that we don't go and say, oh, now we've got to expand. Now we've got a second mortgage on the facility. So you want to make sure that we clear our slate. Then with that, for going after state federal grant line or loans or whatever, they'll go, look at this, we have outstanding debt, so you're in a better position borrowing. And we can then decide what we're going to do, how we're going to expand. You know, is it required a bigger footprint or is it just? Cody and I had discussions of how we could actually, the plant was designed for sixty-five thousand gallons a day. And he said, we can get there if we make some other adjustments and improvements to the plant. But, yeah, again, talking with Steve, we were just throwing ideas around. And I think that's what we're going to do at first. Saying that anyone who wants to submit for development has to provide a projection of water and sewer usage. And that we're going to look at an eighty percent or eighty percent of design capacity cap, that we won't go any further than that.
Okay, sure, sure, thank you. And then mine was a two-part question, if I may. My second part was about asphalt, hard scape. Now, I understand that if Rush River Two wants to put up some kind of public building, there are requirements that go along with that for a certain number of parking spaces. And I just want us to be very aware, and Steve knows because I've said this about Rush River One, that we don't end up with a kind of asphalt jungle. We've already got a lot of hard scape at the post office. Rush River One, we just approved seven more spaces. If Rush River Two suddenly becomes a huge parking lot for a community center of this office building, I think it's really going to move us away from this idea of the wetlands and the nature and maintaining some of the trees and foliage we have. So that's just something as a town, I think we have to be very careful about. We already have an issue about where we can put parking. But, you know, if we become a big parking lot sort of on the outskirts, I don't think that will serve us well.
I had to go through this in my other job. Stormwater management becomes a real, you know, federal, both federal and Commonwealth standards for that. These areas.
And my third point sparked by Brad. If there is any chance that there might be a change of view at any stage amongst the county board supervisors on housing, that might bolster an argument for, okay, we've done the boundary adjustment, that's really exciting, but kind of taking a pause now and not rushing to stage two before we've had a chance to really look at stage one, see how we feel about it, generate some public enthusiasm around it, and maybe revisit with the, with the board of supervisors. Just a thought when you said, you know, perhaps such a chance to go back.
Yeah, I think when, I think when the housing's all done, people have a chance to tour and see. I mean, I was walking up the food pantry. I was blown away with how beautiful it is, how well they furnished it. You know, I've said to many people, you know, walking up the food pantry, it's not just a bunch of secondhand shelves. And when someone walks in there, they feel like they're sort of going into a little grocery store, which preserves their respect and their sense of self-esteem as opposed to live on just going based on the church or, you know, food pantry. So it's a different feeling that I felt. Pretty strong presumption, when we get a chance to look at some of the apartments, we're going to come away the same way. And people are going to say, this is great, you know. And you've got someone with Chuck, Chuck's done this before. So this is his first rodeo. So it's like you've got someone who understands this. And that's the value and benefit that other counties know. Jurisdictions that are facing this question don't have.
One very nice thing, and now I'm opposing. It's a personal plea, that maybe you get away from white and gray. Anyway, just like this.
I will certainly back to that statement. And one thing I think, right, we need to, you know, mercifully in our case, we started out with a very low baseline, considering what the plan was built for. So it is certainly a point that we need to, at this point, be thinking about having forward. But we were lucky to, we had a considerable base upon which to build that allowed us to do what we've done so far. And hopefully we'll be able to deal with what's being considered at the moment. Any other comments from the public?
Sure.
Nancy, you mind a little bit, you mean?
So first, Steve Plesko for Rush River. Thank you for all your support on the BLI annexation process. It's been a long journey for everybody, for us. Brian's here tonight, who's worked many, many hours. He's been with me at Richmond multiple times. So we're glad that's behind us.
I'm just, I'm just seeing you guys at Richmond.
Hopefully we all have to go back there again for anything major. But, you know, when we started the project, before we even put anything on paper, Chuck did an extensive listening tour of the community, both the town and the county and the people. And we learned a lot from that. We learned a lot from doing phase one, you know, working with the town, being trying to be sensitive to the issues. And, you know, as I shared with you all, I feel so lucky to work on this project. Sometimes it seems faded. I lived in Middleburg for twenty years, a small town. So I get it, I get the issues. It's changed, it's a big change, it's really been changed. And, you know, we have to be sensitive to it. And it's really on us to show you that we can do what we promise and appreciate what Brad said. It's very hard to explain sometimes something, you know, what it's going to look like and what it's going to feel like in 3D versus front. I do it every day, you know. But when, you know, to digress, when we lived in West Virginia, we built a house, and my wife does not think in 3D. She thinks in what it looks like in a magazine. And it's like, so I would have to build her a model when we built the house up there. Build a physical model to show her. And, you know, we're happy to do that. And if we need to do that again while we're working on phase two, we'll do that, we'll stake stuff out in the field that we did in phase one, walk you out there and show you what we're thinking of doing and planning. So we will be, we have been doing some homework on phase two. You know, studying the ground, we did some more geotechnical work on the ground just to understand it better. And as I've shared with the mayor and also with Steve Guyerson, we're working on what we call phase three, which is the stream corridor. So Chuck's always had a vision of properties being in campus. And one of his big commitments environmentally was we are not going to cross the stream with any kind of vehicular bridges. No cars are going to be going across there. He does want to have some pedestrian bridges going across that to link the campus altogether. We're working on that right now. We're going to be bringing in some plans, knock on wood, in October, mostly to the county, because it really isn't something that the town regulates, because it's just land disturbance. So what we're planning on is going into the stream corridor, removing the invasive species, retired firm of Charlottesville Ecosystems, a very top-notch environmental and stream restoration company. They've gone in and studied the system, done hydraulic analysis. We tagged how large every tree, we know it's out there. We know what, and we know what needs to go out of it. And one of the, you know, and smack me if I'm going too long, but the simple story is, as streams evolve over time, they tend to incise. They rot down. And so the adjacent wetland areas become disconnected hydraulically from the stream. Because you need the lower flows to keep the ground next to it wet so you can get the wetland plants to grow, as opposed to invasive species who prefer a drought. So what we want to do by doing some regrading in there and putting little devices in the stream is to bring that water level back up. Step one is remove the invasives. And then step two is reconfigure, regrave, in little devices to bring the water level up. And then do some replanting and rebuild the ecosystem there. It'll be great for water quality, it'll be great for habitat. And then we'd like to do a couple bridges, pedestrian bridges, to go across to link the campuses up. So we're working on that now. When I get the plans done, I'll bring them in and show them in a presentation with you all. But from our permit stand in front of our talk to Steve Guyerson, the main focus will be for the town, we'll be looking at our bridges because they're structures, and look at the aesthetics of those. The county, I'm going to meet with Gary on Thursday to give him a preview of what we're bringing in. It's mostly land disturbance, but it's de minimis land disturbance. We've already met with Corps of Engineers, talked to them about our permit process, and they're on board. And so that will be coming next. And knock on wood, January, February, we'll probably start that process. And that will be completed, knock on wood, again, hopefully by the fall. It takes a while to do it, you have to be sensitive to the planting seasons. And then we have to do our clearing up front to get the invasives out. They're very difficult to work with because they want to hang in there. So it really takes some time to do that. But long story short, that should be done hopefully in the fall. And then we'd love to come in November, December, if you're Caroline, and start talking about phase two. We've got some ideas and some concepts. Like we did in phase one, we really studied the ground. We're studying the ground environmentally, geotechnically. You read our minds about the parking. Because we're, I've got our civil engineers are already studying what are potential options for porous paving or some kind of green paving. Because we don't want to have a lot of paving. Because it's a bigger site, you know, the use will be, you know, we'll roll that out, but it's going to require parking. But does it always have to look black or concrete? Not necessarily. But we have totally different soil conditions on that side of the stream. Phase one was all allubial, mucky, we had to fill it up, build a retain wall. We don't have to do that on phase two, which is good news, bad news, because we've got bedrock about six feet down. So that's, that's common. But we do, you know, we have worked with you, we will work with you. And then, you know, Brad's point, I think Chuck set the bar pretty high for us. And it's not going to change in phase two. So we look, we look forward to working with you on that. Please have some meetings in November, December, so we can start talking.
Yeah, it's totally different subject. But I think you can, might be pleased to know, the Current Wine Spectator, which is one of the foremost publications about wine and food and what have you, does an annual survey of best restaurants, wine sellers and such. And the current issue I happen to get today, they named the sixty-three best restaurant with wine cellar in the United States. And the inn is one of those sixty-three. And so I was looking through it, looking toward it, my mind was like, yeah, it should be, it should be, they did sort of take it for granted. Unfortunately, it's, I wonder if they did list it. Fortunately, they did. And a photo like so, when I go on, it's the only restaurant in the state of Virginia that, that's such a work. There's only one in Washington DC. There's not more than three or four in the entire southeast. A lottery in the west coast that asked, we had a problem with this. Well, it's a real, it's a real tribute, once again, to something that we already know all about. But it's kind of nice to have the tribute. There, as opposed to, to make a cut.
So that's great.
Any other comments?
I have a question. When the boundary line is all filed, all that must have signed, then we tend to start generating new maps of the town. Because that been logged up.
I can remember that, but.
I'm thinking.
I brought it over here, I thought, well, it's all up, it's a time gap.
Fair point.
Because it's also needs included, there's sort of a lot of, it's a spiral that goes up.
Right, you have to struggle with what is in the ground already, by the way.
Exactly.
What we're having to.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was.
Maybe we had talked about it in during the process, but it probably, but it could have been. It's not, not a consequential expense. All right. Any other, with that, I would entertain a, well, I will close the public forum, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
Oh, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, we'll see you on February.